We appointed through council several months ago and Freezin Nichols came on board last summer as our consultants to actually start this process. So we did go through the formal approval process, the contract process and everything else last summer, but this is, it's been a little while. So now we're just bringing back the diagnostic report, which really kind of lays out the work to be done over the next 18 months.
Councilman Horn.
Thank you. Right now, you're producing the diagnostics report, which is basically, I'm trying to get an idea of what is included in that report. Is it, are we showing the discrepancies between the zoning and the subdivision ordinance within those two entities and the comprehensive plan? Is that what we're looking at?
Correct. On a higher level, what we say is these discrepancies or these things that we've identified in the report, these are the things that we want to address in the rewrite. So we're all on the same page where we know that whether it's addressing the parking or consolidating some of the zoning districts, we all know that this is the path that we want to move forward with.
Right. And that, I suspect, is a Herculean effort between you, you and our committee that we've put together and staff. Now, the question I have for staff is that now that we have, relatively speaking, a new planning and zoning board or commission with new members, and they're still counting on the existing zoning ordinance, existing subdivision ordinance, and the existing comprehensive plan, are we going to be able to provide that diagnostic tool to them as another element that they can use to make better and more informed decisions with regards to zoning cases?
The zoning cases will still largely rely on the comprehensive plan and other policy documents that we have. This diagnostic report is really creating a roadmap for us to update the zoning and subdivision ordinance. So it's trying to tell us what are our goals, what are we trying to accomplish through this next 18-month process as we write. We are going to be checking in both with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council throughout that process. This is kind of our first step after the contracting. This is our first check-in with you.
Okay.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Again, I'm just trying, again, I know there, with the new commission, new members, having to look at the two separate ordinances, I'm talking about zoning and subdivision, and then also taking into account the comp plan, which took a large effort. Anything that we can provide those decision-makers with elements that help their job a little easier, because some of these are, you know, complex, we have a lot of planned developments going on, we have a lot of revisiting of existing planned developments. So I'm hoping that we're able to have something as we move through this process that, you know, I know we still have to accept those elements as a council, but it certainly seems like it'd be a handy tool to have as they make those decisions. And I'm just bringing that forward as a suggestion.
And they do have that report. The other benefit we have is the two most recent appointees, Mr. Bender and Mr. Lingenfelter, both have a lot of experience. Mr. Bender's been on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Mr. Lingenfelter is, while he hasn't served in Plano, was on the Planning and Zoning Commission in McKinney. So they're both, you know, getting up to speed very quickly.
Councilmember Rick Adeli.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. The first is, at a joint council and P&amp;Z meeting, maybe two or three years back, I know there was discussion about conforming zoning that's on the ground to the comprehensive plan, and I was wondering if that is part of this rewrite process, or for the zoning ordinance, or if that is a totally separate process. Just wondered how those two go together.
Proactive rezonings would come after the rewrite of the, if we put it together, a UDC, we'll call it the Unified Development Code, and so that would come after the adoption of that.
Okay, gotcha. Well, thank you very much. So that's kind of not, not part of this process at this time. That would be a subsequent step. Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Because I didn't see it, and I just wanted to make sure we weren't, you know, missing that opportunity, so it's sequential. And then the other thing I just wanted to underline is that I saw in the diagnostic report, the discussion about parking, and that is something that I think is probably one of the most frequent pieces of feedback we get about our zoning ordinance requirements. And so I think it's great that we're taking a hard look at that.
Thank you. Okay, is everybody, everybody okay with the acceptance of the diagnostic report? Okay? All right.
Thank you very much.
Next item, item three. Streets Bond Referendum Presentation. Karen?
Good evening. Karen Rhodes Whitley, Budget Director. Tonight is the last of our staff presentations regarding the May 3, 2025 Bond Referendum that, right now, totals 700 million. The streets portion of the bond program that staff recommended is 342 million. After tonight, on Friday, I am expected to get in all the boards and commissions reports and recommendations. They will all be packaged. Starting January 13, the City Council will start deciding which projects move on to go before the election.
Good evening, Council. I'm Abby Owens, Director of Public Works. So I was going to highlight for you what is in our proposed streets section of the bond referendum. So this is an overview slide of all the different elements in here, and this is Public Works and Engineering is shown in this section. The Public Works requests are the top two. It's about 130 million for arterial concrete street repairs and overlay, and residential street and alley is around 92.75 million. The 2022 Citizen Survey results, the maintenance of streets continues to be the highest priority identified from our residents. In addition to that, the survey that's completed, one of the questions asked about perception of current servicing level of the streets, so for thoroughfares, residential street repair, alley repair, and also sidewalk. And as you can see, it's about not enough to about right amount is kind of right where we need to be, and the right amount is the majority of them. So we feel that the dollars that we're asking for is going to keep pace with what we're needing. On top of, it's about the right threshold for what the community can handle. So our street network age, as you can see from this graphic, red is going to be our older streets, and these are the two sections that Plano has grown out from. The average street, about 50% of our streets are over 30 years old and are needing those constant repair and maintenance. In Public Works, our goal is to do pavement maintenance and repair. I know you all have seen this slide before. So our goal is to stay in that green line and the orange line. The black line depicts the average deterioration of the street over time, and we want to provide preventative maintenance treatments to stay as close to green and in the orange as we can. If we aren't able to keep up with that street and do panel replacements and maintenance, then that's when it would fall into reconstruction. At that moment is when we would hand the street over to engineering and ask them to do the full reconstruction and design. Not only is that very expensive, but it's also very intense and causes more delays and impacts to traffic as well. This is the overall square footage replaced by Public Works per year. As you can see, we had a significant influx in 22, 23, and 23, 24, and that is a result of the bond package that had passed in 2021. So you see, we did just over 8 million square feet of pavement repair. We have touched a lot of streets and made a lot of repairs over the last few years. For the arterial street reconstruction, on the left-hand side is a map that when we had our streets inspected in 2020 and 2021, it's a contractor that goes through and does the ratings of our streets. You can see what the average scores looked like for each of the segments. And as you've seen before, we will go through and remove panels that need to be replaced, and then the concrete is poured back, and ultimately, we'll put down an emulsion layer to protect the street, and then have the ultra-thin overlay on top of that. We use Cartograph as our asset management system. The system uses the different types of improvements that we do to the streets to estimate what the street score is while we wait for inspections, which occur about every four to five years. And you'll see here, whenever we complete a contractor repair on the road, or whenever we complete the overlay, the system auto-calculates for us. And you can see, we've made some significant impacts in the street network over the last four years. The 2021 bond package, we estimated it was going to be about $2 million per mile to do the repair and then the overlay. We have built-in cost escalation for the 2025 bond. We estimate the concrete repair cost will go about 8% a year based on what we've seen. And overlay, because we really only have two to three years of overlay data, we think it's going to be about 10% increase. So the average cost per mile now is going to be closer to 3.45 over the entire bond package. We plan that with 130 million, we think we could achieve about 38 miles. And if you look at the graph and where we're looking, that would be, on an average, about nine miles per year. And these are the areas that we think that we will have concrete ready and for repair, and then also the overlay. The 2021 bond package, we estimated we would get to 50 million, or to 50 miles, and we're right around 45.6 right now, with some of the ones that originally had been planned for 23, 24, had to be moved to our summer of 24, 25. This is our map of where we think that this bond funding would be spent. The green is where we've already completed. The blue is where we're planning with current bond funds, and then the gray is where we will be heading next for repairs and overlays. This is subject to change depending upon any sort of development projects that are going on, as engineering has intersection improvement projects. So we move around based upon where the pavement can be repaired, where it's needing repair, and then where we can overlay. We do avoid areas that we know we're going to have to be having a sewer line replacement or a water line replacement coming up, so that we don't have to do concrete repairs twice. For residential, we do residential repairs in areas that we call zones, and our goal is to get to every zone about 20 to 25 years, depending upon the need in that area. When we go to these zones, we will do repairs on all the streets, the alleys and the sidewalks, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community in that area, but also any ADA requirements with the addition of ramps. On average, each one of our projects, which you all have seen come before you on the council agendas, cost about $5.3 million. Usually, it's about two projects per zone. So with this funding, we think we'd be able to get to about eight zones, and this does have cost escalation increases built into it as well. And this is our neighborhood map. Any of the items that you see that are in that bluish teal color are places that we have not been yet. The red dates highlight the average age, or the average date that the street was constructed in those areas, and we monitor them to see when we might need to be going back to there. An example is J-11. Originally, that was on our plan that we thought we'd be getting to this year, but after driving that area, the streets and alleys and sidewalks are in relatively good condition. So we're not sure that we need to do a zone sweep there. We think that one of our requirements contractors could go and handle the needs that we have there. So we evaluate it based on the condition of the area, and then what that timeline looks like to be able to get out there to complete a project. Any questions on those? If not, I will let Caleb Thornhill come take on.
Abby, as a quick reminder, can you remind us when we are projected to run out of bond funds for streets?
So we have currently programmed, all of the bond funding for us will be spent this fiscal year. We will have completed all of our projects that we anticipated.
All right. Caleb Thornhill, Director of Engineering, and I've got a few slides to go through. As Abby mentioned, a engineering project will occur when we are replacing the asset, not just repairing it. So all of our projects will be a full replacement of the asset. So the first one we have is alley reconstruction, 6 million. That's approximately about six miles over that bonds, the bond term. This is a new one that we did not have in the last bond. This is right-of-way reservation and construction. And so with our new street design standards, we've indicated some streets in the downtown area that we would like to add to improve circulation, to improve the downtown function. And so with some recent legislature changing, we have to set aside funding to include those on our street design standards. So we are setting aside that funding for these projects, depending on the development in downtown. Bridge repair replacement. Every year, we do a repair project. This is actually a replacement. This is the Shiloh Road reconstruction that we recently completed. We added two lanes, but we had to replace the bridge, one because of the age, but two, more importantly, because of the drainage. The drainage in the area, the existing bridge was not adequate, was not at the right level it needed to be to meet the drainage for the creek. So with it, we replaced the existing bridge and then added the new bridge because of the widening of the project. Intersection improvements, always one of our funnest projects. Intersection improvements, there's two main reasons we do those. One is to relieve congestion, improve traffic capacity, but more importantly, if we have a safety concern at these locations, if there's a site distance issue, a geometry issue with the intersection. So typically, these will involve adding additional lanes, dual lefts or right-turn lanes. Say them jokingly, they're our funnest projects because they usually involve easement acquisition. And on arterials at these locations, it's sometimes challenging to get easements. And then, of course, we've got tons of franchise utilities in this area, and unfortunately, they tend to create the biggest obstacles for us. Residential and collector street reconstruction. So like Abby mentioned, when we're coming in here, we're doing a full replacement. So from right-of-way to right-of-way is an example. Russell Creek Drive reconstruction, where we've replaced the sidewalks and the street several times, or more often than not, we'll also look at the utilities, if there's any storm drain improvements, water or sewer improvements as well with these. Screening wall reconstruction, again, another one that we partner with the Public Works Department on these. Public Works will replace the bricks if they're falling or failing. But if we have a structural issue or a safety concern with the wall, the condition of it, we'll do a full replacement, and that includes the addition of new piers for hopefully those walls that will last for anywhere from 30 to 40 years. Sidewalks, this is a great picture our team got with the drone. This is a new sidewalk along Plano Parkway. We had two bridges, and this is when they were setting one of the bridges. But this category is for the reconstruction of sidewalks, or if we're filling in gaps or voids in locations throughout the city where we need sidewalks. Traffic improvements, this is a huge initiative that we've undertaken over the last few years. We had this item on our 2021 bond, and we have it again on our 2025. You can see there the list. The picture that you're looking at is a traffic control cabinet, kind of the brain of an intersection. We're replacing, right now, all of the cabinets throughout the city. We're also replacing different components, the traffic controller, we're adding vehicle detection at the signals, we're adding CCTV, we're also adding fiber to improve communications to our signals, so that our team can rely on that information and get it quicker and better. And we're real excited about the improvements coming with this. And water main rehab, pavement and sidewalk repair. So this is another one that we did not have on the 2021 bond package. The project you see there is the Parker Road. That it was a water main project, but we replaced nearly one lane mile of pavement with the reconstruction of that water main. So this is a category that we added this year because a lot of our water projects include a significant amount of pavement repair, and we don't want to exhaust the water fund for pavement repair, so we've added this item for this year. Believe that is the last one, just a summary. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Prince.
You have a question on the traffic signal upgrades, updates. I know when we had the big ice storm and we lost electricity, we had some issues throughout the city of all of the traffic signals just going dark, right? So there wasn't the flashing, it caused big safety concerns. Will any of these upgrades address any of those challenges, have some sort of battery power, anything that would help in that sort of emergency if we face that again?
Yeah. So I don't know if Abby wants to add anything, but we do have battery backups at those locations. So each of our signals has a battery backup. The unfortunate part is, I think there's an, is it an hour, or do you know the timeline?
Four hours.
Four hours.
So that wasn't long enough.
So unfortunately, in those situations, if we don't have power restored, we do have, I think it's 30 temporary generators that we can deploy to critical areas. Unfortunately, with that storm and the outage, it's only so much that we could do with that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. And this isn't really a question, but thank you, Caleb and Abby. This is, I feel necessary to use this opportunity to talk about the maintenance roadmap that I've been talking about for a while. I don't think anybody likes the road construction, but I think everybody recognizes the need for it. Our property tax is broken up into two components. Maintenance and operations is one, interest and sinking, which should really be called bond debt, is the other. We are necessarily looking at issuing a lot more bond debt to take care of our roads, but because we are built out, we're now in the business of maintaining our roads. And I believe that we really need to be maintaining our roads under the maintenance and operations, baked right into the word, portion of our property tax rate. And the biggest reason for this is, currently, in 2024, we're spending about $25 million a year just in interest on our existing bonds. When these retire and we issue the new bonds based on next year's election, we can expect that to go up just based on current rates as opposed to the last bond issuances. And it's a much larger bond package than last time as well. So over the next many election cycles, it can't happen all at once, but the next, I'm sorry, not election cycles, the next many budget years, budget cycles, that's what I meant to say, the next many budget cycles, I would like just to shift as much of the maintenance burden from the bond column of the property tax rate to the maintenance and operations column as we can, so that in the future, we're saving 25-plus million dollars a year, and we can repurpose it to, well, we could put it right back into our roads. Thank you.
So as a reminder, and just, you know, adding to that conversation, currently, we're spending about $110 million a year in roads, and that is to address the booming growth that we experienced in the '70s, '80s, and '90s now has the echo effect that we've talked about of now needing significant maintenance, repair, and even replacement now, 30 and 40 years later, depending upon the road quality and construction, the amount of traffic, all sorts of things along those lines. But, you know, if we take that $100, $110 million and then extrapolate it out for inflation and everything else, you know, those funds have to come from somewhere, and whether it's debt or whether it's operations, I think what we see is that the repairs are requested by our citizens to make sure that they get done. And on which side of the equation is really a council choice, but I think that with our 3.5% cap that we have on revenue, to try to get to that would require either an election by the citizens, or it would require maybe a series of elections by the citizens in order to authorize that with all the other repairs that we have. And I think those are council choices to consider. Those are things that, again, moving from debt to cash is, you know, we understand the challenges and the advantages of that, but those would be council decisions for future budget discussions.
Okay. Thank you for that bond report. Next item is consent and regular agendas. Is there an item a council member would like to remove? Councilmember Horn?
Yes, please. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item C for individual consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Rick Adeli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remove item I, the investment policy, for individual consideration.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor Protim?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item number K for individual consideration.
All right. Lots to do. Lots to do. C I K. All right. Council items for discussion or future agendas. All right. We will take a recess and be back at 7 o'clock. I now declare that the city council is reconvened in open session, that all members are present. We'll begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Ashlyn Stanley, student ministry pastor with the Chase Oaks Church Legacy Campus, and the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. I am so glad to have the Cub Scout Pack 1259 from Harrington, Houston, and Wells Elementary Schools. We've missed having the pledge led by you guys. So if you'll all stand for the invocation.
Wonderful. Thank you. If you'll bow your heads with me. God, thank you so much for this opportunity to gather, Lord, and I just pray that everything spoken of this meeting, spoken at this meeting, Lord, is fruitful and is honoring to you. And Father, I just pray that you bless each individual that is here this evening and that wonderful and productive conversation is able to take place. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay. You all come on down. Cub Scouts. All right. You guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's face the flag. You guys start.
Please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and individual.
Thank you. Stay right there, guys. Okay. Thank you, guys, so much for being here. I want you to have one of my lucky little key rings. You can put them on your backpacks or around your wrists. You know, you guys know. You know what to do. Okay.
This is my second time.
All right. There's your purse. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Here I am. Here I come. Here we go. There you go. You're welcome. Thank you, guys. Let's take a picture real quick. You guys want to just flip or turn around? Everybody just turn around and back up.
Front row?
Oh, front row. We got the tall ones in the front.
Sorry. That's true.
Oh, how does that happen? Okay. Here we go. Perfect. Guys, great.
Everybody see me? I'm gonna hit three first. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. One. Perfect. Thank y'all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Appreciate it. So we're also thrilled tonight to be back in our chamber. We've been out for a while, but it's a beautiful, beautiful chamber, and we're really proud of it. So it's obviously a pleasure to have our Cub Scout group to do the pledge, and we are thrilled tonight to have our first proclamation since we've been back here, and we've been waiting desperately to be able to do this. And so in honor of Hesley Rivera, the 2024 gold medal-winning Olympic team, USA Gymnastics, I would love to recognize Hesley and her family. Hesley, come on up. Henry Rivera, Heidi Rivera, and Hanley Rivera. So it is truly our honor at the City of Plano to recognize you, Hesley, with a proclamation. And so I'll read it really quick. Whereas Henry Rivera and Heidi Ruiz are the proud parents of Hesley Rivera, who was born June 4, 2008, in Hackensack, New Jersey. Hesley became interested in gymnastics after attending a friend's birthday party that was held in a gymnastics facility in 2013. Is this true? Okay. Hesley and her family moved to Texas in 2021 so she could train under Valerie Louieken. Whereas Hesley competed in the 22 Winter Cup, where she placed third in the all-around final. As a result, she was selected to compete at the DTB Pokal Team Challenge. While there, she helped the USA win gold, and in July of '22, she competed at the US Classic, where she finished second in the all-around, won gold on the balance beam, silver on the floor, and finished fourth on the vault. So whereas in 2023, Hesley competed at the 23 Winter Cup, where she won the all-around competition, placed first on the balance beam and floor exercise. And as a result in winning the competition, she was named to be on the junior world championship team and was the 23 junior national champion. She became age-eligible for the senior-level competition in '24 and made her debut at the 2024 Winter Cup, placing third in the all-around and tying for first on the balance beam. On June 30, 2024, Hesley won the wide-open competition for the fifth spot on the USA Women's Gymnastics Team for the Paris 2024 Olympics. Hesley competed at the 24 Olympic Games, winning a gold medal as a member of the Team
Indeed. Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Always so proud.
I also want to let everybody know, and I'm sure many of you were there, for our Christmas parade last Saturday, and I heard it was wonderful. Unfortunately, it was out of town. But I do want to thank the Rotary Clubs for all their organization and help. It was a great event, and we can't thank you enough. We look forward to next year. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented, except for, please pull out items C, I, and K for individual consideration.
Okay.
Second.
Now, you have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of C, I, and K. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Item C. Sorry, I'm moving too fast. Okay.
Item C, to approve an increase to the current awarded contract amount of $270,000 by an estimated amount of $270,000 to exercise an additional six months renewal term for management of all secondary employment activities of Plano Police Officers from extra-duty solutions for the Police Department and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Councilmember Horn.
Thank you. Chief, thank you very much. This is an item for us to continue with the funding of the EDS subcontract. I just really wanted, just kind of, before we went through the approval of this item, just ask you a few questions, if that's possible.
Absolutely, sir.
How long has the department actually been using the EDS system?
We signed on with EDS in June of 2023. We started using it, we went live with it in April of this year.
Okay, and are you using it just for scheduling? Or are you using it for, are you using it for scheduling, correct?
We are using it to manage off-duty employment.
Currently, the off-duty. We're not using it for your regular staffing, is that correct?
We are not using it at this time. We are building out the models that we need to put that in place.
So you're currently working on the model to try to fit it into your normal routine scheduling of your officers, correct?
Yeah, so I think what you mean is our regular on-duty scheduling. Yeah, we're working on the, you know, filling the spreadsheets and the databases that we need to get that in place now.
When do you expect that to be fully functional?
I think we can have the piece done for just scheduling probably by the end of February, maybe March. But ultimately, our goal is to tie that into people's software. We're going to need TS's assistance with that. They are aware of that, and I'm not sure how long that piece will take.
Okay. So far with the scheduling with the extra duty, have you discovered any bugs with the system?
No, no, there are no bugs. I think that I've come across. There are things that we have to call them direct on occasionally. And one of the things I like about this company is they've got 24-hour support when we can't call them. There are some jobs that come up that are just outside the window, very unique, one-off types of things. But yeah, it's pretty much running as designed.
Okay. Now, the last question I have, we are talking about another $270,000. Have you found any value in the software with the management of the extra-duty scheduling right now? In other words, we've already spent $270,000 since April, I mean, to get this approved and start using extra-duty scheduling. It seems like an awful lot of money to, for, I don't know the scope of the work here on how much extra-duty the officers are, you know, how many, how many, how many times do we use extra-duty officers? I know we use them a lot on Sundays, special events. We use them for our balloon festivals. We use them for all the events we have in town sponsored by the city. Are we finding value in this EDS program right now?
Yes, absolutely, we are. Yeah, we, and you mentioned the $270,000 that we do know, that we are paying, and we are, and that is a lot of money. However, we don't know the value of how much we were spending in time before we got this. I've already been able to utilize two sergeants who were spending all their time, we call them patrol administrative sergeants. They spent most of their time in the day managing call-in jobs that were coming in. We don't have to do that anymore. That's handled by EDS. The coordinators before that would have the officers do the schedules for the individual employers. They typically do that on-duty time, and they almost have to to get it done. And except for the hospitals and the churches, and probably the, we're going to have to add the Plano Event Center to that, too, we're finding out. The coordinators don't have to do as much, in fact, we don't even have them anymore. All of that is handled by the company. So we don't have officers on their, while they're at work, having to drive someplace to go pick up a paycheck. And that wasn't always the case. Some of our employers were paying the officers directly in their bank account, but certainly not all of them. And so those officers have to go, and the day that they work is typically not the day that they get paid, unless it's a cash job, and we wanted to get away from those, too. So typically, the check is cut later. Now they've got to go pick that up. All that's, we've done away with all of that. You will be rare now, I think, to find a police department in North Texas that's not using some software application, some third-party vendor, to manage off-duty employment. Because what we're doing here in Plano is not unique in itself, although we may have a lot more than other places. But because of some of, just the nature of our city, there are some cities that have more than us, like Frisco, too, of similar size. But most cities have some off-duty employment, and they're using, most cities are using a third-party vendor to help them manage that situation.
Okay, and just for clarification, we think we'll start using the EDS software for managing the schedules of our on-duty officers sometime in April, do we think?
Yeah, probably sometime in the third quarter. I'll just say that. We can have it done probably sometime in the third quarter on actually using it for scheduling. Won't address our payroll issue until we get that connected to another application that the city is already using. But for on-duty scheduling, we think we can get that done in the first quarter.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Anthony, did you have a question on this item? Okay, sorry. Sorry, I was just making sure it wasn't.
Yes, yeah, I know. I've got item I coming up as well. Thank you for making sure I'm on point, Mayor. I appreciate that. I was just going to make a quick comment, that I had a phone call with City Manager Israelson yesterday, and I'm in favor of approving this, but I also think since the scope of this has kind of changed, you know, over time, we were initially just looking off-duty. Now we're including on-duty. Initially, the users were going to be paying for it. Now it's a city budgeted expense. I think just with those kind of changing parameters over time, it is a good idea to, you know, to go through an RFP process, you know, a formal process, with those new parameters in the near future, and it sounds like that is our intent. And my hope is that just because all eight of us have put so much time into learning about this, that hopefully we can get that done before May, before some of us hang up our hats and ride off into the sunset. Hopefully, we can wrap this up. But anyway, I just wanted to put that out there, and anyway, I'm in favor of approving it.
Is that a motion?
Sure, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, I was going to get to you, Rick. Sorry. All right, I have a motion and second to approve consent agenda, item C. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. All right.
Item I, to review and approve the city's official public funds investment policy and providing an effective date.
All right. Mr. Riccadelli.
Okay, thank you very much. So I have just a couple of things I'm going to pass around. If y'all could take one of each, but I promise I will keep this quick. We've been discussing our investments.
Promises, promises.
Let's see, I'm going to do what I did during the budget. It's 7:19. I'll be done by 7:24. So five minutes, that's the promise. But anyway. Y'all remember the discussion we had about the legislative agenda and beneficial amendments to the Public Funds Investment Act? I would also like to advocate that we make some beneficial amendments to our own investment policy. I support the safety, liquidity, yield method of investing. The question is not the order of priorities, but I think how big of a gulf we have between the second priority of liquidity and the third and final priority of yield. You know, for context, any reasonable returns that we don't harness result in additional taxation, because money has to come from somewhere. We just heard about the $342 million that we need for streets. And obviously, the overall proposed bond package right now is at $700 million. So obviously, every dollar that we don't gain in returns has to come from taxes. And also, you know, I think a major issue that I've discussed previously is inflation. In a high-inflation environment like we had for a couple of years just recently, our investment portfolio can lose purchasing power just sitting there. And so given those concerns and just with a desire to kind of keep our order of priorities, but really say that within those priorities, we would like to explore opportunities for additional return, I'm proposing two changes. I had this printed before further conversation with the staff, and so the third change, I don't think is necessary. But the first two changes, on the statement of intent, I noticed that we talk about security, we talk about liquidity, the daily cash flow demands of the city, and we talk about conforming the state and local statutes. But we don't talk about the why in SLY. We don't talk about yield at all in our statement of intent. And so I'd like to add that in. I think the staff made a great point that the teacher retirement system of Texas, while very safely invested, is not comparable to what we're doing, so I would take that part out. Again, this was printed before getting kind of those final responses. But I would like to add, it is the city's intent to maximize returns while still adhering to security, liquidity, and yield principles. And then this language about recognizing that when the rate of inflation exceeds the rate of return on funds, that's tantamount to a loss of capital. We're losing purchasing power. Even if the dollar amount in our accounts doesn't go down, its purchasing power goes down if inflation exceeds the rate of return. So I just think that's important to put in there. And then on the second change, the way it currently reads on the bottom of page two says, "The final objective of obtaining a market rate of return is much less important than safety of principal and liquidity." So as y'all can see, the changes I've proposed there, I agree that it is less important, but I think the way that it's written currently almost dismisses return, and I'd like to place, you know, a bit of a higher priority on that. So I would say it's very important, though somewhat less important, than safety of principal and liquidity. So all three of those goals are important, but obviously, the least important is yield. But it's still an important goal, and I'd like to put that out there so that hopefully our actions that are guided by this investment policy will hopefully pursue a little higher return. And, you know, and then also, I added in, you know, it is the city's intent to maximize return on investment to the greatest extent allowed by state law, including the Texas Public Funds Investment Act. So I would also point out that the idea, as I talked about with our legislative agenda, would not be that this would include, that this would change how we invest the whole portfolio, but really the longer time horizon, the five-year kind of tranche of funds. Because I think that if you guys look at the second document, this is one we discussed, this is prepared by the staff and something that we discussed during our legislative agenda discussion. During every five-year period, including from 1999 to the present, including the five years that included the Great Recession, the S&amp;P 500 has outperformed our benchmark, the two-year Treasury. And so I, you know, to the extent permitted by state law, I think that it would be beneficial to try to, while still obviously putting safety of principal first and liquidity second, adequate liquidity for the city's needs to pursue a little more return. And so I see it's 7:24, as promised. So I will yield the floor, and I urge that we make those first two amendments.
So much of our public funds, our investment policy is taken directly from the state law. So it comes directly from the Public Funds Investment Act. This proposal changes some of the language that currently is in the state law. State law requires that we invest in what we call SLY, which is safety, liquidity, and yield. There is a much lower emphasis on yield, because we need to focus on the safety and liquidity, because this is taxpayer dollars that we are investing. We do not want to lose a dime of them. And we're also a pretty short-term churn, if you think about it. We have $660 million at year-end in our investment portfolio. We have a billion-dollar budget. So we are spending that money pretty quickly, so it's pretty difficult to go out long-term where you're able to pick up a higher yield and you're able to recoup a loss if you get a loss. I mean, if you saw today, the Dow Jones Industrial had one of the worst slides in the last few months since 1978. So, you know, we don't want to take risk in that policy. I will also mention that many of our surrounding cities don't even put yield in their policy. It's not something they even focus on. They focus on safety and liquidity. They're very key. So it would be my recommendation to keep the policy as is. And I will answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Williams.
Thank you. I'm supportive of trying to increase our yield under the permissible parameters of the Texas Public Funds Investment Act, but not at the expense of safety and liquidity. But I think with, as we see in the chart here that Councilman Riccadelli provided, there's obviously not no risk in any kind of investment, but sound fiscal practices like we've been trying to employ for many years can help offset the impact of a slide like we see between 1999 and 2009. There were two significant events during that time. And as long as we are looking to a very long-term forecast, not necessarily long-term individual investments such as other long-term bonds, but taking a long-term view of our investments, and we can get out, so to speak, in the, in significant events where it looks like we need to get out and then reinvest regularly during upticks, then the rest of our fiscal practices can help offset any risk of those slides.
Mayor Protem.
So Denise, let me just understand, have you had a chance to look at Councilman Riccadelli's proposal?
I have.
So it sounds, when I'm looking at the two words that I seem to see the differences, our emphasis is on maximum security. And it sounds like Councilman Riccadelli's emphasis is on maximum returns.
Yes.
And they're both maximum, so that's the reason. But the legislative policy, as well as our own policy, is to maximize security.
Yes.
Investment, yield, all those things are also in consideration, but maximum security should be the only one that should be emphasized. Is that what you're saying?
It is going to be our major focus. It's the safety and liquidity. I mean, if you recall, Orange County years ago went bankrupt because they did not have the liquidity that they needed. So they needed to liquidate some assets and accept some unrealized losses. And so they all of a sudden became realized. The other thing I want to mention is 30% to 40% of our policy is actually bond funds that have been unspent. If we get so much yield on them that we exceed what we pay the bondholders, we have to pay that to the IRS. we have to pay that to the IRS because that's arbitrage. So we can't, if we aren't spending those bond funds as fast, we and sometimes we don't. We try to get them spent quickly so arbitrage doesn't matter. But often, we don't. And so we this year alone, we paid $600,000 to the IRS in arbitrage because we earned more on our portfolio than we're paying our debt holders.
I see. So in in yours in your recommendation, based on your analysis with the staff, is that we continue with the language that we currently have because that tracks the legislative policy with regard to the money that we have?
That's correct.
Councilmember Riccadelli.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Denise, for that great information. So and I appreciate you taking a look at at my proposal. I just wanted to clarify, because a statement was made that I'm talking about making yield first. I'm proposing keeping it third. I I think safety of capital is first, liquidity is second, yield is third, just like we currently have it. I'm just saying, the way this is currently written says there's a there's a huge gap between the second goal and the third goal. And I would just move the third goal closer to say, you know, this this still is the third most important. It's not as important as the first two, but it's also important. All three of them are important. That that's my intent, at least. And 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 I just wanted to ask, I know that we typically have about a $660 million, you know, year-end value of our investment portfolio. Do we know what the lowest the unencumbered balance in the portfolio has gotten at any point, say, in the last five or 10 years?
That's not a statistic we look at. And we only do a hard close at the end of every fiscal year. So because of that, that's the only time we take into account what encumbrances are encumbering your budget for the next year.
Okay, thank you. But then, you know, typically, we have a very significant amount that's not legally encumbered that that is left.
I don't think I wouldn't call it significant. I wouldn't call it significant. When you've got 40% of the portfolio in bond funds, that that's that's legally restricted. Then you have special revenue funds that are legally restricted. Those are grant funds. I mean, there's all the TIF money that's in the portfolio. That is also legally restricted. So you have a lot more legally restricted in the portfolio than than I think the average person probably realizes.
Okay, gotcha. Well, thank you for that. Anyway, the the point I was making, though, is just I know that we have five-year investments currently, five-year bonds currently. And so that's why this great analysis that the staff prepared, which, by the way, I want to be very clear about this also. I I think you and the whole finance team are doing a great job, Denise. And I'm just I'm saying if we gave you a little more, I guess, freedom or direction to within state law and and within SLY principles with yield third to pursue, you know, while still being very safe, a little bit more return, you know, it looks to me, based on this analysis, like there might be, you know, there there might be opportunities.
And counsel, I I think to, you know, kind of summarize, I think Denise is recommending that we move forward with the language. But I think the direction for councilmen to be able to say, you know, to staff to to continue to seek opportunities for yield as general direction is also something that we can accept and continue to look at as staff. And whether that is, you know, reinvestment, whether that is an aspect of refinancing and seeking additional yield, whatever that might be, I think that that direction for us just from a general purpose to to continue to seek yield where possible and where within the the statutory guidelines is something that that we're happy to accept.
Mayor Proton.
Did you want to make a move? So with that said, so based on what Denise has presented, that this is required for the legislative policy, I'm going to move that we adopt as is.
Second.
Thanks. I have a motion and a second to approve item I. Please vote. Motion passes seven to one. All right. Item K.
Item K. An ordinance to adopt, excuse me, to appoint an associate judge of the municipal court of record of the city of Plano, setting the term of office and compensation for the judge and providing an effective date.
Okay. Mayor Proton.
So, Mr. Mayor, we make it a policy to always.
Welcome the new associate into our city of excellence. And I wanted to take this opportunity to welcome our new Associate Judge Shayna Primo to the city of Plano. I don't want it to just be a consent agenda in which we just sort of pass her by. I do want to recognize her. If you're, yeah, thank you so much for standing up. I believe that we have a great municipal court, and I hope that you will remain with us and continue to bring more excellence to our court system. And welcome.
Thank you. Anthony.
Oh, you know, I I thought Maria was about to make a motion, and so I was gonna I was gonna second. Okay, well, I I just wanted to echo those comments and welcome Judge Primo to the city of excellence. You know, I I think, by the way, that name Primo, you know, kind of kind of means excellence, so we know you will be a Primo judge. Thank you for that, and I will move that we make this appointment.
I second that.
Thank you.
Sorry, Rick. I had you there. I have a motion, a second. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Congratulations and welcome. Thank you. Next item.
It is comments of public interest, and we did have one speaker signed up, but they are not on Zoom.
Okay.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.